Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the special meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council and the Redevelopment Agency, Monday, November 6, 2006. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Oles, will you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Rainey?
Here.
Councilmember Regalia?
Here.
Councilmember Abrams?
Here.
Councilmember Skow?
Here.
Mayor Hicks?
Here.
Moving on to the consent calendar, does anyone on the council wish to pull any item on the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, yes, I would. I'd like to talk about item B.
All right. Do I hear a motion on item A? So move to approve.
Second.
Does anyone from the audience care to address the council on any item on the consent calendar? If so, please step to the microphone.
I know that Bob Powers is going to be here regarding item B, so if we could wait till he arrived, that might be good to handle it when he gets here.
With permission of the council, we will defer this until after public communications, and then we'll see where we stand.
That's fine.
All right. All in favor of item A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public communications, does anyone in the audience care to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda? If so, please come to the microphone. All right. Seeing none, we will move forward, and we're sort of then caught with the situation of waiting or until after the end of the issue tonight, or going ahead with our conversation now.
I don't mind waiting until later.
Do you think he wants to sit through the entire city council meeting?
But I do think...
Why don't we hear your concern? And I do see the executive director of the Downtown Business Association...
I guess my concern is just basically with the proposal. I would like to know more about what it is the DBA plans to do. This plan sounds like they are just going to turn it into a parking lot, which it is right now. I mean, it sounds like it's, what, an overflow parking area for valet? For the members of the public, what we're talking about is it's the interim use of the property where the Veterans Building used to be, and what to do with it on an interim basis. And there is a proposal to work with the DBA to do this. So I have some questions, and I also have, the long-term nature of this agreement also concerns me. I could see maybe a two-month test, but then we could come back and plan some events that might be more appropriate in the second phase.
Could I ask, could I ask Ms. Brone to give a brief statement as to what the intent is? And I believe this is not a long-term use, as I read it. Perhaps you could give us an overview.
I'd be happy to. I'm Valerie Brone, the Community Development Director. Emily Chang, who's the executive director of the Downtown Business Association, is here as well, and like you, I had understood that Bob Powers would be here. But in general, the agreement as it's set up would initially be for the holiday shopping season, really through January 18, 2007. Now, the way we're proposing the agreement get written would have the ability to extend it beyond that with the authority of the executive director of the agency, which is Gary Picorni, and with the request of the Downtown Business Association. That could be changed if the agency would prefer it to come back to them before any furthering of the agreement went into place. The purpose of the agreement is to provide additional parking in the downtown area during the holiday season initially, and it's through a valet parking program. The DBA hopes to partner with the three existing valet sites. The Downtown Business Association would take the lead on branding the sites so that they would all have a universal look, and it would be a look for the downtown area. And it would be to indicate to the general public that anyone can use it. It's not just if you're going to Prima's, or just if you're going to Ruth Chris, or one of the locations. And then our specific parcel would be used as a location to put the cars after someone had left it with the valet. And so it is a parking lot, a private parking lot at that point. They're hoping the program's successful, and they may want to extend it past the holiday season, but they don't know at this point if that's true. And I note that Bob Powers, who has been negotiating on behalf of the DBA on this project, is here as well now and can address further questions.
It's one of the things that they wanted to do as a service to the community, to add additional parking during the holiday season at an easy pace. I mean, they're combining with Prima's, Ruth Chris', and Massimo's Restaurant, and you can drop your cars, well, actually, Bob, you can drop your cars there and go shop for the day, and...
I guess my issue is I would like to see us do something a little bit better with that site than just turn it into a parking storage area for an extended period of time. I mean, as I see it, nothing would happen to the site. We'd just open a gate to the fence, and some of the valet people from the restaurants would then bring the cars and store them there. And I don't think that's an appropriate interim use. I mean, it's really going to the benefit of just a few businesses that are using it. And I would like to see it be a more joyous holiday types of thing. Let's run the valet parking ourselves, and maybe combine it with some downtown activity. But the way we're doing it, that's not...
I have others that would like to comment. Mr. Skow?
Ms. Brone, or maybe Mr. Powers, where would the valet station be for this particular? I can't imagine folks would park at, or go to a valet station at Massimo's, and then they shuttle the car all the way to across from the movie theater, so is...
Mr. Powers, perhaps you can address these issues. You're correct that because it's on the other side of Mount Diablo, the thought was this would be, if we end up in partnership, if the DBA ends up in partnership with Ruth Chris', it's from that location that this lot would end up being used to support the valet program.
Yeah, this is actually a pretty complex...
Please state your name and your representation.
My name is Robert Powers, and I'm one of the board directors for the Walnut Creek Downtown Business Association, and Chair of the Parking Committee. And it's a pretty complex issue. We've looked at a lot of different parking lots. Obviously, it doesn't make sense to park at Massimo's and then shuttle them down to your lot. It involves a lot of different property owners, dozens of property owners. We came up with this idea because we saw a lot of empty spaces going unused, like in Commercial Lane, for example, at night. And it's hard to see spaces go unused. So we thought, what can we do to occupy those spaces? So we thought valet parking would be a great area to do on Commercial Lane. So we're looking at a lot of locations on Commercial Lane. We're looking at the Vets Lot. Regional parking, we're donating. Two lots, we're donating. California Cafe Lot for Valet Lot. We're also donating the Mark Morris Lot for Valet Lot, and a couple other ones.
So would this, if this were to come into effect, the folks parking on the old Veterans Site, would it be strictly at a Ruth's Chris' valet station, or would it say DBA?
Yeah, in fact, it was actually good timing. We've been working on this. This is a really complex project because it involves a lot of different property owners, a lot of different parking spaces. Our first goal was to try to operate this ourselves, and it just wasn't cost-effective. The parking operators, I thought, you know, my first goal is, we're giving you the parking spaces, why can't you make a go of it? At $5 a car, why can't these parking operators make a go of it? According to them, we've got three beds. We would have to subsidize it. The DBA would have to subsidize it. That's what I did. It's like, wow, I'm in the parking business also. Anyways, that's, we've got three proposals. I also, we're going to subsidize it. The holiday season, there's a lot of traffic, and there's not a problem. It's just after the holiday season, it quiets down, and we want to run this year-round, not just during the Christmas season. We want to run it Thursday through Sunday, day, afternoon, and throughout through the evening. In order to do that, we have to subsidize. So the bits we got back are $40,000, $50,000 a year to subsidize. And, you know, it just, it didn't work. That's why I've taken so long with the project, because I kept going back to drawing boards, how can we do this to make it work? And the only thing I came up with is if we partner with local restaurants, and what's in it for them? What's in it for them is, we had to come up for, you know, what's in it for them, and providing extra parking is a big. Branding was another big one. I have copies for you, too, what the signage would look like, the branding. We still are going to have to subsidize a part of this. It'd actually go vertical.
It's vertical?
Yeah. And then there's a couple of the valet podiums.
The square the other side.
Yeah, kind of like a banner.
Yes, yeah.
It's actually really nice. So we want to make it open and inviting. You're driving down the street, and you know, and parking's tight, you know, you can pull up to a valet parker, and they'll valet park your car.
But a person could not pull up to this lot. It's only through...
No, it's only through the valet. Yeah, it's only through the valet. And I totally agree with Councilmember Abrams that, hey, whether uses could be done on that lot. It's not a whole lot. I mean, it's a vacant lot. It'd be nice to run the GBA, like, look at maybe using it for the Jazz Festival, Pumpkin Patch. I mean, there's a variety of things to use. You just hate to see land and lots, parking spaces, go unused. And in fact, it was Glenn who actually, last year, we got talking over the ice rink and about parking, and we provided parking for, we're thinking about putting a better parking program for employees that work in the downtown area. And because we use the Bank of Walnut Creek, for example, as a off-site ice rink lot, so we thought, why not use that for free employee parking? Get them off the street, get them off the meters, give that in the evenings for free. And so that's kind of what got the ball rolling on it, was looking at these off-site lots. And like I said, the only way it works is if we partnership with the restaurants. And so basically, our wording, we're changing the branding, and the branding would be, the restaurant's name would be taken off, and that would be the branding. We'd have uniform dress code policy. I get upset when I come downtown and I see Walnut Creek orange cones, and out of uniform, and shirt tails untucked, and I'd just like to clean up the image a little bit downtown.
Ms. Rainey?
And these agreements are, because some of these properties, as Mr. Abrams said, might go for a better use at some point, but would be, they're short-term agreements after...
Correct.
Thirty-day extensions, as I...
Right.
Right.
Could I ask, Mr. Powers, the prime time for the restaurant parking would be evening, I would assume. What happens during the day?
It would be same day and night, public valet parking.
So people who want to shop could go to Ruth Chris' and get valet parking for shopping?
Right. It's not Ruth Chris', it's the valet...
The location, though.
Yeah, the location, we post in front of Ruth Chris', but it's not for, if you're going to Ruth Chris', you can use it. If you're going to Broadway Plaza, you can use it. If you're going to educators, you could use it.
So you would be charging the same amount that other valet parking services around town are charging?
It would be $6.
Okay.
Yeah. So they actually charge now six, I think some have opened up to the public now. It's fine print, it's six, and then $10 for the public, so we were adamant on...
But it's $6 for how long? Per time?
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, you don't want employees pulling up if it's late for their shift to pay $6 and park all day. So we, you know, you may even have to put a time limit cap on that.
And the initial term is from November 7 through January 18, which I guess then we could take a fresh look and see how things are going.
Right. It's, like I said, this is a really complex deal. It's like putting together a big jigsaw puzzle with a lot. We've got to get a lot of participation from other property owners. Obviously, the Vets Lot is a big, our problem in that end of town was there was not a whole lot of other late locations that we could use, so Vets Lot was a nice temporary.
And to clarify, the Downtown Business Association is doing this to assist in traffic congestion and parking during the holidays downtown as a more or less service to the public?
Right. We're going to have, the DBA is going to have to pay something for it. It's not going to be free to the DBA. I mean, it's certainly not, the DBA is not going to make money on this. It's the opposite. We're going to have to subsidize part of it.
Are there other questions?
I would just like to suggest that we defer this and go back to the drawing board and come up with a more definitive program, so that really was the purpose for my taking it off the agenda tonight.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I think it makes sense for the holiday season. I absolutely agree that at the end of the term, January 18, or prior to that, that we review how successful it was, and whether or not we wish to proceed with this. It may no longer be needed, and I think it's an appropriate time to review. It's also possible that it's been so successful, we choose to continue, but we won't know until that time.
Right. And we're not, just to be upfront with everybody, we're not even positive if we're going to even get it going, because it still depends on Ruth Chris' in this five-step process. The, you know, we had to come up with the branding, we had to come up with the location, and now we have to, we've been not talking with Ruth Chris', and it's not, I mean, we don't have a signed contract with Ruth Chris' on here. They're concerned with signage. They want, you know, they're second-floor tenants, so that they're limited on signage. And they're concerned, they wanted something on the sign with their logo on it, and we have, you know, we don't want people to get confused that's Ruth Chris'. We want them to think, okay, this is open up to the public, anybody can park here.
I do have one other question. That's one place where you'll have a valet. Where else will you have your...
Oh, in front of Max's, across from the City Garage was...
Massimo's.
Mass. And then Prima on Main Street.
Are you working at all with Broadway Plaza? They have their own valet?
Yeah, that step, we just...
Is more than you can do with this?
We just want to get this done first.
Yeah. That makes it too complicated for now.
Yeah, it's definitely doable. I've been talking with Shelley Drafts from Broadway Plaza, and that's our goal, to incorporate more locations. But right now, it's, you know, we like to just get to going for holidays, the goal.
Get started, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Rainey?
Yeah, I think, I appreciate Mr. Abrams' concerns about it, but I feel that to defer just throws another complication into it. They need to know that they've got the support of the city, and if there is one thing that we hear complaints about, it is parking, and primarily during the holidays. And you have this, so that people that are circling the block, looking for that one spot, can just pull up to a valet, and for $6, they're done with it. I think it's a good program.
I would agree with Glenn and Sue. And I would add that in the short term, I hear what you're saying, Charlie, but in the short term, between November 7 and January 18, we're not going to come up with another use for that parking lot, that I see. And we might as well go ahead and improve the parking conditions downtown, especially during the holiday season. So with that, I would like to move to direct the agency attorney to draft a contract with the DBA to operate a public valet parking program on the agency-owned property at 1250 Locust Street.
Second.
All right.
I'd just like to comment, and before I vote no on the issue, I would at least like to see something in there where, at the end of this time period, there is not just this, you know, continue the contract without it coming back to the council for more discussion.
Would the maker of the motion...
That's not what it says in here right now.
Would the maker of motion be willing to make that as an amendment? That it come back to the council for discussion after the holiday?
Sure, that's fine.
Second. All right, so amended.
And again, I guess, you know, when we went into this, the problem with that lot is that it's, I mean, we put a fence around the lot after the building was taken out. It's not very attractive right now. There is nothing with this program that is going to at all improve the attractiveness, and we're missing an opportunity, by the way, we're planning to use it, so.
All right. Perhaps you could put some twinkly lights around the fence.
Yeah, put some lights on the fence, do something.
That might be nice.
Pictures of the city councilman.
Oh, God.
You said something attractive.
Well, thank goodness you won't be able to put my picture up there. I'll be done. Does anyone from the public care to comment on this item? If so, please step to the microphone. All right, seeing none, we will bring this back to the council. And I would just briefly comment that I see this, I agree, as a temporary use. It will help to, during the interim, maintain and provide security on the vacant site, and we can see then, after the holiday season, how it is working, and if, gives time also to talk about any other kinds of uses that might be appropriate for the property in the interim. So, thank you very much. And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
I amended my motion.
Thank you for coming.
Still, no.
No, it's all right. Mr. Powers, you probably had trouble parking. All right.
We need to set up a valet station outside City Hall.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, item four, consideration, the St. Matthew Church Office and Family Center expansion, Appeal, A Conditional Use Permit Application Number Y030333, which has been continued from the city council meeting of October 3. And at that meeting, the city council took public testimony and closed a public hearing. And we then directed staff to hold meetings with concerned citizens and the church staff to develop proposed conditions of approval to address noise, traffic, parking, oh, we hear that parking thing again, and facility usage impacts associated with St. Matthew Lutheran Church.
Good evening, Mayor Hicks and members of the council. My name is Sandra Meyer, and I'm the Planning Manager for the City of Walnut Creek. I'm sitting in for the project manager, Alan Carrion, as he's ill this evening. As Mayor Hicks indicated, this is a continued hearing on the appeal of the St. Matthew Church Family Center and Office Expansion. The council did direct us in the interim to meet with the neighborhood groups, as well as church representatives, to come up with new or revised conditions of approval regarding parking, traffic, noise, and facility usage. We did hold meetings with the church representatives and the neighborhood the week of October 16. People who attended those meetings, there was a list that was attached to your staff reports. And staff did use the input that we received from the groups to revise the conditions of approval that are before you this evening. Just a quick, again, project overview. The project site is located at 399 Wiggott Lane. It's approximately 3.9 acres, and the zoning on the property is single-family residential, R-10, and the single-family residential zoning district does permit churches with a conditional use permit. For orientation, this is Wiggott Lane, this is Cedro. To the southeast is the Walnut Acres Elementary School. To the east, down Cedro, is Foothill Middle School, and this is Elgin Lane to the south of the project site. Again, the project is, the proposed project will demolish the former sanctuary and a modular building totaling about 6,900 square feet, and the project proposes to construct 12,700 square feet of new facilities, which would include a family center, administrative offices, Sunday school classrooms, and restrooms and utility spaces. This is a site plan of the revised project layout. It's oriented so north is to the right side of the slide, and the project would also revise the south parking area to narrow the parking aisle to make it a better configuration. The project proposes eight tandem parking stalls, and they would also revise landscaping or add new landscaping around the development area, new development area. The project propose, is requesting a tree removal permit, as well as approval of an off-site parking agreement. This is an existing site plan of the existing project, just for orientation, and this is an aerial photograph of the project site showing existing facilities. Again, Wiggott Lane is to the east of the project. The existing sanctuary building is just south of the north parking lot. You have a fellowship hall, which is called Stenman Hall, the Queen Annoia, which is their existing nursery, that is the modular building that would be removed, as well as the Wagner Center, which would, used to be the former sanctuary building. Again, the council asked us to meet with the neighborhood and the church representative to address issues regarding noise, parking and traffic, and facility usage. With regards to noise, most of the concerns that were expressed by the neighborhood groups were with regards to the youth group activities that occurred at night, and most significantly, the noise that occurs with outdoor play and activities associated with the youth groups. To address those, new conditions or revised conditions have been included, which prohibit youth group activities being conducted in the south parking lot, as well as the north half of the north parking lot. I'm going to go back to a slide, just so we can get orientation. Here, this is, so the new conditions of approval would prohibit youth group activities in the south parking area and the north half of the north parking lot. The conditions of approval would allow outdoor activities for youth groups to be conducted in the south half of the parking lot, of the north parking lot. The reason that this was felt to be appropriate was because the setback distance between the south half of the north parking lot, from here to the north property line, where, which abuts three residents, is approximately 85 feet, and this did seem to be an appropriate setback. However, the conditions of approval do set a limitation on outdoor activities to end at 7:30 PM. All youth group activities would be required to end at 9:30 PM, and this would include the parking lots being cleared by that timeframe, so that not only would the youth group activities be complete, but all cars would be out of the parking areas, and all attendees to the youth group activities would be picked up. There, the conditions of approval do indicate allowance for minor fluctuations to those times in the event of weather or car troubles, so that, you know, you have some allowances for that. For overnight activities, all youth groups would be, or all attendees for overnight activities would be required to be inside the building prior to 9:30, and again, all parking would have been, have to be taking place before 9:30, so the parking lots are quiet. And then there would be no outdoor camping permitted on the church facility. And when all construction is complete, all youth group activities would be limited to the new courtyard area, the entry plaza, and the south half of the north parking lot. But again, the north parking area would be, all the activities in that area would have to end by 7:30 PM. So with regards to the parking issues, the, as the council's aware, the church was requesting approval of an off-site parking arrangement, where they have an annual parking agreement with Walnut Acres School to utilize 31 parking spaces in the faculty parking lot, which is on the south side of the school. And there was concern expressed at the previous meeting that what if that parking agreement were not continued? What would be the remedies for an off-site parking arrangement during the peak parking demand times? Or should the attendee, you know, the amount of attendance at the church start growing, and they could no longer accommodate parking on the school site, as well as the Walnut Acres site? So the conditions of approval now require that there be a parking contingency plan submitted for review and approval prior to issuance of any building permits, and this would, parking contingency plan would include a written agreement from a business in the Shadlands Business Park that the church has worked with before, that has allowed them to utilize their parking lot for off-site parking. The church did utilize that before, and also had hired some shuttles, or rented some shuttles to shuttle their attendees to the church, and this seemed to work. And we did discuss this with the neighborhood, and the neighborhood said when this was done, that it did seem to address the parking issues. So that would be a requirement. In addition, the church has agreed for the peak parking demand days, that they would be willing to have parking lot attendance, which would, what happens is, when people come to the church, obviously, the first parking spaces that are parked in are the ones that are closest to the street, and they can tend to block the view of vacant spaces further into the lots, as well as the new buildings in the south parking area will screen some of those. So parking attendants could keep track of the available parking spaces and direct people into those, and keep them from parking on the street, or direct them to the off-site parking lots, should those parking lots become full. The other thing the parking contingency plan would contain was a plan for adding additional services, which could stretch out or alleviate the parking demand at any one point. And this parking contingency plan would, has a threshold in it that says that if the parking agreement with Walnut Acres goes away, of course, these additional parking requirements, you know, any one of them will... requirements, you know, any one of them or a combination thereof would be required to be implemented. Or if the, a survey which would be conducted six months after completion of the buildings and thereafter every 36 months, which determined that the onsite and off-site parking lot is at 95% capacity, that they then would require to implement the additional parking contingency measures. With regards to outside usage of the facility, there were concerns expressed that especially right before the last city council meeting, a Jewish religious facility actually uses this during their high holy days. And it, those days actually coincided with the peak parking demand for Walnut Acres afternoons between 2:00 and 3:30. So, a condition of approval requires that any outside use of the facilities would, if they're going to be conducted during the peak parking demand, when school is in session, that they utilize an off-site parking location and shuttle, or they stagger their time so that they're not during the peak parking demand. The council members did receive a letter from that Jewish community that uses this, which I don't think was included with the staff reports, that indicated that they are perfectly willing to address all of the issues that came up with that last item and the conditions of approval that the church has to adhere to. In addition, the conditions of approval do require that a new fence or wall be constructed around the south side and the west side of the new development area. The location of that fence is shown here on Exhibit B. It was not attached to the original staff reports. There are extra copies of that Exhibit B in the back. And the conditions indicate that the final design and materials for this fence would be done at design review approval, final design review approval. You do have some letters before you this evening from, I believe, the appellant and one other property owner on Elgin Lane that is requesting that the condition of approval actually require that it be eight feet in height in all locations where the new fence is to be located, and that it be constructed of a masonry material, and that it be constructed entirely on the church's property and that the church be responsible for that maintenance. With, the, the letters do indicate that there is agreement by all of those property owners to have the masonry wall and that it be up to eight feet in height. But one of the meetings that the city conducted with several of the neighbors, we didn't, they didn't indicate that that was, they were entirely comfortable with an eight-foot-high fence, nor was the materials agreed upon. So, we feel it would be better that it allows up to an eight-foot-high fence, so they wouldn't have to come up back to approval for that, but that it be subsequently worked out between the church and the neighbors. The church is intending to do story polls to indicate how the height of the fence would look at eight feet and seven feet. And that the materials can be worked out from a design perspective and a sound attenuation perspective, and then approved by the design review committee. The other concern about, in terms of locating the fence entirely on the church's property, that probably would not be a problem. But if it is determined to be a masonry fence, in terms of maintaining the south and west sides of that fence, if it's on the property line, they won't have access to that fence. And so, it may be problematic. It's still somewhat of a good neighbor fence unless they were to obtain easements to actually maintain that, that may be somewhat of a problem. So, with that, we are recommending that the council uphold the planning commission's approval of the conditional use permit through adoption of the proposed resolution as is before you this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Does council have questions?
You, you sent this out and we only, the, we got this, one letter from the people on Elgin, so.
You actually received a letter from the appellant.
Right.
And then the, a letter from.
Yes.
Which I'm not going to be able to pronounce their last name, I apologize. Starts with a K.
Okay, but the, the conditions that you have negotiated appear to be acceptable.
Well, with, with the exception of they are requesting that it be masonry.
Right. But you're missing through that.
When.
Other question? Yeah, go ahead.
You said that you met with the neighbors and with representative of the church.
Yes.
Did you meet together?
No.
So, they were separate meetings?
Yes. There was actually a request from one of the neighbors that they meet separately because they thought there would be, you know, they wouldn't be able to be as open with their concerns or their request for conditions of approval.
Does issuance of a building permit signify, maybe this is more for our city attorney as much as for you standing, I'm not sure, signify concurrence with the conditional use permit and waive any future legal action in regards to the conditional use permit? Question makes sense?
Yes, it does. And, and generally, that's the case. I mean, there is a, a process for certain development permits, I mean, a particular act of state law that allows them to accept the benefits while still challenging individual conditions. So, it, I guess it's.
Maybe.
It's, it's a maybe.
You're asking an attorney, you're going to get a maybe.
Sorry.
Right, and the final design review approval could also be appealed to the, to the city council. So, that, that is, will go back, this once, if the council approves the conditional use permit, it will go back to the design review commission for final design review approval, and that could be appealed to the city council.
So, we've only just begun, perhaps?
Perhaps.
Other questions? Ms., Ms. Galielis?
You indicated that you met with the neighbors and then met separately, or whoever was, I'm not sure, who was in charge of the meeting? Mr. Carrion? Who was in charge of the meeting?
Who met with them?
Mm-hmm.
Both Alan and I did.
Okay.
Yes.
And then you met separately with the church representatives, is that correct?
Yes.
Did the church representatives agree with the things that the neighbors were asking for?
No. I mean, there was definitely, this is somewhat going down the middle of what the neighbors would have liked to see and what the church would have liked to see.
And so, it's this middle ground that you're suggesting that we adopt that's in this revised resolution, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question, first of all, regarding the fence. In the conditions, it talks about up to an eight-foot fence and a masonry or a other material.
Sound attenuation.
I don't say that exactly, but it affers.
Right.
And so, the design review commission therefore would be the deciding body on the final decision on what the fence is in terms of the.
Materials.
And material.
Right.
And the neighbors then could have input with the design review commission at that, in that process. What I understood was that, as you just said, some of the neighbors didn't necessarily want the eight-foot-high wall and maybe one suggested another kind of material. I understand there's a wood material that is, has some kind of sound barrier that works very effectively if properly engineered, is that correct?
Right, the, there is a eight-foot-high wood fence that surrounds the Los Huntas parking lot next to the Pleasant Hill Art Station that was designed by, with an acoustical engineer for sound attenuation. And it's a solid, it has to be completely solid board fence, no gaps at the bottom to let in noise, but it was tested for sound acoustics and does provide sound attenuation. The North Creek Church also has an eight-foot-high wood fence that runs along their back property line that abuts the residence.
Okay, and the, it's mentioned in both of the letters that we received today, one from the Poitheven, Bruce Poitheven, and the other one from Andrew, I'm probably going to kill this, I'm sorry, Antokviak? Say it again?
Antokviak.
Thank you, Antokviak. That indicate that there is complete agreement with all of the neighbors siding that side of the church where the fence would be constructed. Did you have any meetings, or, I know you had simultaneous meetings where you had different neighbors coming to different times. Did you get a sense that all of the neighbors that bordered that, at any time, did, did all of them tell you that they were in agreement on this eight-foot-high masonry fence as was requested in these two letters?
Well, the, we had the first meeting, which was 6:00 on Tuesday evening. I didn't, you know, I, I, I know there was discussion about it being a sound attenuating material, that there, that it be on the church's property and that it be maintained by the church. But again, we met with four different neighbors the following day. And one of those, at that meeting, did express concern about an eight-foot-high fence. So, they may have subsequently had a meeting in the neighborhood to, you know, to come to agreement with all of those adjacent property owners, but at that point, there wasn't.
Okay, so, that's a little unclear, that maybe we can get that clarified.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Ms., did you have a question?
When you're finished.
Yeah. Also, in the letter from Mr. Poitheven, it discusses the concern about needing to clarify and add language to the conditions of approval that clearly state the terms of the land use plan are subordinate to the new conditions, given that there are new conditions being proposed that are not in the land use plan. Can you speak to that?
The land use plan was proposed prior to these new conditions being proposed. The conditional use permit would take, I mean, that's, those are the conditions of approval that the, the church has to abide by. The land use plan may have some inconsistencies with those new conditions. We could require the, the land use plan be amended so that it is consistent.
Okay. And then there's some other issues here that I've never heard of before that are a little bit new. One is the idea of extending the fence to the boundary of the Catamatory and Benzie properties. Has that ever been brought up before?
There was, the Catamatory's, you know, when we were talking about the extent of the fence, the Catamatory's property. The Catamatory's property is half in the boundary of the church and half adjacent to another residence. So, the boundary fence would only be on half their property. I know they, you know, were kind of like, hmm, how's that going to look? So, they were a little bit concerned about that. And the Benzies property, the development area only extends to half of their property line. The concern would be, is that they, if the fence was required to be installed along their entire property line, is there's quite a bit of significant landscaping along the northern portion of that property that may end up having to be removed to put in the fence. And so, it may be, the landscaping may be a more appropriate buffer than a new fence. But that's not around the new development area. That's, that's the old portion of the buildings.
Have, have the Benzies directly commented on this? This is another party that.
No, they didn't, they didn't attend any of the, the meetings that we had subsequently with the neighborhood. I think they have attended one of the design review commission meetings, but I don't know if they specifically asked for a fence for their entire property line.
Okay.
Yes, we have a map in our report that shows that red line of the extent of the, of the fence.
Right.
So, these questions, are requests to extend that in additional distances, or what is it that we're talking about here?
They're requesting, this is the, the fence, they would request that the Catamatory's property would extend to the east so that it's consistent along their property line. And then the, it would extend farther north so that it was completely bounded, the Benzies property, rather than on half their property.
And the church would pay for all this, of course.
Yes.
But the Benzies had directly not requested that, that too are not.
Not that I'm aware of.
And then, since the map is up there, could you point out where in the parking lot the trash enclosure area is?
If I, I, I'll go to the new site plan.
Okay.
Is that?
Sure. Yeah, I just want to know where it is in terms of the pickup of the garbage trucks.
It, it's right here.
And how far does the fence go in terms of that, that location?
It's, this, this, this is the new development area that's shown by this dash line, so it would go to, to approximately there.
So, that would.
The trash is on the inside of the masonry, or whatever the wall will be.
Yes.
If that's the old plan, could you put up the new one?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
This is the new one, okay, and that's your trash, though it's still within the wall, the new.
It's hard to tell, though, on these, where that extends in terms of the Benzies property. Okay.
Could I, I have a comment about, if I may, about the wall. I'm a little concerned about the masonry wall along the southern edge because the new building is going to be relatively close. It's just going to be one parking space and in and out, is that correct? Looking at, that's the south end, and that's where you're, they're asking for the wall.
Where the, what do you call the long?
Yeah, along there.
Along here.
Along there, okay.
Yes.
The problem with masonry is it bounce, sound bounces. And it's going to bounce from a masonry wall into the new building and back and forth, and finally, over the wall. I'm not sure masonry is going to do what some people think it will. It's not going to absorb the sound. The wood sounds as if it might be better because I don't think the sound bounces as much, does it? On wood?
I'm not an acoustical.
Neither am I, but I.
But that question actually came up at one of the, the first neighborhood meeting. And one of the neighbors that lives farther north on Wiget was concerned about, you know, this new masonry wall, is it going to, now the noise going to bounce back down Wiget Lane? And Mr. Wattenberg, who is, I believe is an engineer, gave a scientific explanation on why that wouldn't occur. So, that may be something that.
Well, it occurs along freeways all the time. People who didn't hear.
But it bounces.
It bounces up.
It bounces up. And this is because it's, it's at the, it's not going up. It's, it's, it wouldn't.
But my point is it could. And I think that we see this happening, and especially with those walls being close together, a lot of it may stay in there, that's true, but some of it could well be bouncing over. So, before we just say, yeah, it's going to be masonry, I think we need to have a little more information. And the wood that you mentioned may be a better choice all around in keeping the, the noise where people would like it to stay, rather than escaping.
Well, they, yeah, as the, once the construction is complete, the activities that seem to concern the neighbors in, in terms of noise will be conducted entirely within the enclosed courtyard, the entry plaza, or in the north parking lot, so.
I, I understand, but there'll also be noise from automobiles, starting and, and stopping, that type of thing, yes.
Destruction, too.
Right.
But isn't, just following along on Mr. Galielis's comments, but isn't that an item that they're going to really go through at design review when they look at the materials and height on, in, on the individual property owners and the wall?
They would be looking at the design of it and materials from an architectural standpoint. I don't think they would be requiring an acoustical, acoustical study at that point.
So, could, if I could follow up, could we then add a bit of language to the conditions saying that the design review commission will consider the acoustical quality?
Yes.
Of the fence?
Yes.
That's the whole point.
Okay, so we can require that?
Yes.
All right. All right, any other questions? We may have many more later, but I would like to hear from the community now. And we already did close the public hearing, but this is a special meeting. And we will allow, we'd like to hear from the appellant, the Poithevens, we're up to 10 minutes. And you can divide that up between you, however, way you wish. And then the church representative, we're up to 10 minutes, and also you can divide that up if you wish to. And then after that, we will open it for public comment. And since we have the, the notes and the minutes from our previous meeting, we would like to ask you to address your comments to the conditions that are being proposed. And up to three minutes from any interested party. And then, at the end of the public comment, we will. comment, we will have the church representative wrap up for up to three minutes, followed by the appellant's wrap up for up to three minutes. And again, we would remind you all that this is a business meeting. We want to hear from everyone and give everyone the same opportunity and courtesy. We would ask that there not be clapping, and, and no bells and whistles, and so on. And we, we really would look forward to hearing from all of you. So therefore, let's go ahead, and we will open the public comment. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Rosalyn Poithevin, and my address is 2404 Elgin Lane in Walnut Creek. I will share my 10 minutes of time this evening with my husband, Bruce Poithevin, the co-appellant, and our comments are being made on behalf of the Wiggett Lane Neighborhood Group. First of all, I would like to thank the city council for listening to the citizens of Walnut Creek who oppose the expansion of St. Matthew Lutheran Church. You have heard the fears of the neighbors of the church who believe this expansion is wrong for the neighborhood and the city. You have listened in a way that has been far more considerate than the planning commission members we met with on August 24th. Thank you for your courtesy. I would like to clarify condition number 12. I don't think Ms. Myers did so when she was here a minute ago. It states the owner shall maintain consistency with St. Matthew Lutheran Church land use plan dated July 17, 2006 regarding parking management, overnight activities, community users, noise control and abatement, and neighborhood communication. Could you please verify that the conditions of approval on the document we received in the mail dated November 1st and are discussing tonight will take precedence over the language in the land use plan if adopted? I guess you can answer that at the conclusion. Condition number 14 refers to peak use of the church that will require the church to adjust the timing of the church services to off-peak periods, utilize a shuttle service from an off-site lot, or other means to minimize the impact of traffic on and around Wiggett Lane. How will the city make sure this plan is implemented? The church could always use another service, they could add another service, and that would help terrifically and be a very simple solution, but we really need to know how the city plans to implement this plan. How will you enforce it? Conditions of approval, numbers 19 through 21, all relate to the parking conditions and development of a contingency plan. With a projected growth rate of 20% over the next five years, parking and noise problems will surely escalate. Several ideas within the conditions have been discussed before, but there is still no verifiable plan to implement parking procedures, only promises that a shuttle service will be used, or valets will be used. Who within the city of Walnut Creek will be assigned to enforce the contingency plan? To whom is this task assigned, and will we know who this person is? Who can we call with our questions or comments or problems? Condition 21(c) refers to reports that will be made six months after the completion of the project. Would you consider working with a representative from our neighborhood to report on parking conditions as they affect those living in the vicinity of the church? Currently, turning from Elgin Lane onto Wiggett Lane is very dangerous, because cars parked along Wiggett, drivers approaching Wiggett Lane from Elgin Lane cannot see, and they have to pull halfway out into the street. It's very dangerous. Cars should be strictly prohibited from parking in front of the church, because they create a blind corner, and accidents have and will continue to occur there if cars are not eliminated from that portion of the street. Condition number seven addresses noise abatement, but offers no means of enforcement should the noise become unreasonable. Wouldn't it be easier just to say that at this site, the neighbors are located so close to the church that no outdoor activities regarding amplification be held? Unreasonably loud activities should be held in a regional or city park, or appropriate hall for amplified music, not in our backyards. And this is a technique other neighborhoods use, other neighborhood churches uses, use successfully, and I don't see any reason why St. Matthew can't adjust their activities to do the same when it is apparent to everyone that they don't have the land and the space to stand outside and make the noise that they do. It is not fair that the neighbors should endure continual blatant disregard for the noise ordinances every week when the youth groups meet. That is unreasonable. What enforcement do you have in place to prohibit the excessive noise from the youth groups and miscellaneous groups? We do believe the 9:30 cutoff time for youth activities is too late, and that youth groups should end at 8:00 p.m. or be conducted in the late afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. I would also like to add that we all support the youth groups, but we think that at a church, they should be engaging in church activities, and if yelling and screaming is part of that, then they need to go inside to do so, because they simply live, we simply live too close to them, and it's not fair for us to have to put up with that. Without St. Matthew, our neighborhood is a quiet refuge for the neighbors who help support one, it is a quiet refuge for the neighbors who help and support one another. We do not have a noise problem in our neighborhood. However, St. Matthew brings a noise problem to us, and they bring traffic problems, and until now, we have left alone to deal with the problems. Without means of enforcement, the conditions we are discussing tonight are meaningless. Please do not abandon our neighborhood and leave us to police St. Matthew with no means of enforcing city ordinances. The church must be held accountable for excessive noise, traffic problems, safety and security issues within our neighborhood. The city council of Walnut Creek and the city of Walnut Creek must be held accountable for enforcing the conditions it will require of the church. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have a handout that has a history of the issue of the wall.
Mr. Poithevin, could you just kind of get the microphone up a little bit? Thank you.
Just want to hand this out. Good evening. My name is Bruce Poithevin. I live at 2404 Elgin Lane in Walnut Creek. And I'd also like to thank the council and the planning staff for meeting with the neighbors in last month. It was our first and unfortunately only chance to get into our concerns and talk about the issues in detail. We are pleased that some of our thoughts found their way into the proposed conditions. My wife has voiced concerns about the enforceability of some of the conditions. I want to talk about the sound wall in particular. That's item number 22. The wording in the proposed conditions is especially vague and does not reflect the history of this issue. The handouts should help in that regard. We have suggested alternative language to you via the email, which we've already discussed, and so I presume that you've all had a chance to review it. A sound wall was made a condition of the expansion at the very first meeting of the Design Review Commission about two years ago, and it has been a constant requirement of every meeting since then. The city planning staff has supported the requirement at every step along the way as well. It included its recommendation to the planning commission, or, excuse me, the design review commission on June 7th, when they made their final approval. The reason that there was no specification as to the type and size and height of the wall is that the neighbors affected weren't really sure as to what we wanted. And also, we were hoping we wouldn't have to have the wall. We were hoping that the church expansion wouldn't be approved. When the approval was, was passed, the neighbors got together and decided what kind of a wall we wanted. The staff, planning staff, in its recommendation to the Design Review Commission, made a comment about walls in regards to their effectiveness. It stated, "A masonry wall, veneered or stuccoed, would be the most durable and can accommodate climbing vines, whereas the use of a wood fence would pose a future maintenance replacement issue for the adjoining property owners and the church." This has been a topic that's been discussed at length with the neighbors, and we met last week as an attempt to resolve this issue, and unanimously decided that we would support an eight-foot masonry wall, as suggested by the Design Review Commission years ago. All of those people are here, if you want to canvas them and confirm that this happened. We were trying to speed this process up. So if you have further questions about the sound wall, I'm happy to discuss them later. But since this is our last chance to discuss the expansion of St. Matthew, I'd like to give some final thoughts. We're a group of about a dozen homeowners and taxpayers and longtime residents of Walnut Creek. Several of the people in our group have lived in their location since before the church was there. We've had to sit and watch as the church grew and grew from a small neighborhood church of about 300 people to now one that has more than 1,100 members, more than half of which live outside of the city of Walnut Creek. So in essence, we've had to sacrifice our safety and our peace of mind for outsiders to come in and flood our streets. We fought this issue all during these years because we believe in the, in that issue of protecting our neighborhoods. The parking issue has not been resolved, it will not be resolved, and the conditions that are proposed at this time won't do it. You know they're not sufficient, we know they're not sufficient, the church knows they're not sufficient. It's just being ignored. They're putting, we're putting a little Band-Aid on it and saying, this is it. Now, I ask that you pay a little attention to the neighbors after, since you've approved this, and help enforce these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, then next, if we could hear from the representatives from the church.
Good evening, and thank you for taking this time on election eve to schedule this meeting. I really appreciate the fact that everyone is working to get this done. My name is Jeff Teeman, I'm the executive pastor at St. Matthew Lutheran Church, and I also want to thank the staff for taking the assignment that you gave them last month to do this. And as Sandy Meyer said, we have before us something in the middle, where, as Alan Carrion said multiple times, let's agree to disagree. This is what we're gonna propose. Having said that, you know, we really want to see this project go forward. I would just like to make a few comments on some of the conditions, and really, these are mostly clarification. On number 13, on high attendance and holiday worship services, we, we do this, we do this kind of thing already, and this is really a clarification, utilize off-site parking, comma, shuttle service, and parking lot attendance. We already have an agreement with Walnut Acres for Christmas Eve and for Easter Sunday, so we think that there should be some clarification, and it's literally across the street, we don't need a shuttle service if it's across the street. So, something along lines of shuttle service if required, or if it's, you know, further than a certain part, you know, distance away, or something like that. And then another small item, on number 14, Sandy Meyer referred to the weekday peak time between 2:00 and 3:30 when school is in session, and we'd just like to have that language when school is in session, because that, that is the issue that we're trying to mitigate there. So, the, and then, just a short comment on the wall. We actually did organize a meeting with a few neighbors earlier in this process to get inputs on the fence or the wall, with the understanding that this was going to be, you know, the height would be approved, or an exception by the planning commission, so that was the up to eight feet, and then the specific design would be decided by the Design Review Commission. And I am glad to hear Bruce Poithevin say that they're, we're working together to move this project along. That's good news. The concern that we have is that if we, we think the better place to make this final decision is at the Design Review Commission, and we, as Sandy Meyer said, we have got a couple volunteers that we're going to put up examples, because we heard some concerns about the height. But if the decision is eight feet, then we can just focus in on the design and the material and so on. The issue is, is really one of fairness. The, the sound wall is obviously there to eliminate sound going into the neighbors, but these conditions eliminate the use of the parking lot for youth group activities. So it seems to me that one option would be a masonry sound wall and the allowance for activities in the parking lot, and that's what the sound wall is for, or a fence and, and these restrictions on the, on the, on the youth activities. And, you know, so the main issue really is one of fairness and even-handedness in terms of how things like the sound or parking and so on are dealt with in our situation compared to other assemblies. So, I think it's a complicated thing, and we'll let you decide how you want to do it, whether you want to decide now or push this to the DRC, and then we would be prepared to come with a proposal. It has always been our intent to build a wall or fence, to pay for it, and, and that would be, that would be our nickel, that we would, that we would do that. So that has, that has been consistent, that we've said all along on this whole project. Thank you very much.
Question?
Question, please.
So if I understand correctly...
Could I hold up? Could we ask the questions at the end of their 10 minutes and not cut into their time?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
We're done.
Oh, you're done? Okay.
That's how I...
Well, that took care of it.
It was a short 10 minutes. We want to move this along, too.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Scruggs.
All right, let me get my... Except for the minor comments on items 13, 14, and 22, am I to conclude that the church is in agreement with conditions 1 through 22?
Well, with the, our concern is, is the issue of fairness, so that, you know, there are things in here that are above and beyond the, you know, other requirements for other people, so, and that impacts us in certain ways. So for example, the curfew time is 10 o'clock, and we're being asked to, to cease activities by 9:30. So that is a concern for us, and so I just want to be open with, with that, mention that as a concern. You know, we would like this to go forward, and, and as you said, asked before about the building permit, eventually, if you approve this, then that would be part of the building permit, and then we would go forward with that, and we would implement what you've decided. The concern is, if there are changes along the way, or restrictions, for example, the thing I said about the, the wall, it seems unfair to have, have a masonry wall if that's, and again, I'm not, I'm not saying that we wouldn't propose that based on all the inputs, we just haven't had that meeting, the meeting that we have with the neighbors, it was inconclusive. You know, this is something we'd like to work on together. So I'm not, so the, the short answer is that I, I want to let you know that we are concerned about the fairness in, in these conditions, and that that is a concern for us. So, as Sandy Meyer said, this isn't exactly what we wanted, or what we agreed, you know, what we proposed, it's a compromise.
When you say it's a compromise, a compromise assumes that you're coming together, so is it a compromise, while you may have some concerns, that you're willing to accept?
I, I, I just can't do that. I can't, I can't stand here and say I would accept them at this point, not knowing how the whole thing is gonna come out. And, and the reality is, as you know, this, if this is appealed, you know, back again, then, you know, because the way the process works, we have to, we have to say things now and express our concerns now, or we're limited to bring that back up. So if this comes back, we just want to say now that we would probably come back to those things that we're concerned, if it was appealed back to you.
So you are protecting your rights, basically?
That's, that's what we're doing. We're just protecting our rights.
Do you live with this, these conditions, as long as your objections are registered?
Yes.
Could I just clarify one thing? You're saying you, you believe that the masonry wall would be considerably more expensive than a fence? I think that's one of the things you're implying in, in your comment, and you expect that it would contain the sound better than a fence? And if that is the case, then there should be no reason to restrict use of that lot by your young people...
That's correct.
...for a period of time.
I mean, if we, if we, if we go and build out a whole sound wall, then the, that protects the sound and...
And, and let me just ask again, about how late are those young people now, or have been, let's say what, what your practice has been in the past? How late are they out there? Seven? Let's say what, what your practice has been in the past. How late are they out there? 7:30, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock?
Well, typically, I mean, the, the, the issue that our neighbors have the biggest concern with is the, is during the school time, is the middle school program.
Yes.
And the, they are typically outside, they gather, you know, a few minutes before 7 until about 7:30. Sometimes they play a game outside in the grass on the outside, of course, that will all, that game will, area is in the courtyard in the future. And, and then, and then we move them inside. So a kind of large motor activity, then small, then small group time and teaching time.
So, so 8 o'clock as of what you have been doing up to now is the latest that they're outside? Up to now, when you've had your, your...
Well, then they come out afterwards.
No, I... But you don't have them running around at 9 o'clock? You don't have them outside playing games at 9:00 P.M.?
That's not the normal thing that we do. That's, that is correct.
I'm just trying to clarify the timing and all. Okay. All right, thank you.
But, but, but we also have people complaining about, you know, calling the police at 7:19 for kids, you know, laughing and playing outside. So I don't think it's a time issue. I think it's, and I know it's part of this contentious process as well.
Well, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And next, as, all right, we're complete now with that testimony. And so would others from the audience like to comment on the matter? And so you would have three minutes. Please state your name and address. And if other property owners who have been part of the discussions of the, the wall, if you are one of the property owners that adjoins the church property, I would appreciate hearing from you and give your input on that. Please state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Phil Sapinar, and I live at 2336 Elgin Lane. My backyard views the south parking lot of St. Matthew's Church, and I spoke at the last meeting. And noise continues. And of course, I'd rather call it a sound wall than a fence, because if there wasn't a lot of noise, we wouldn't need a sound wall. The noise continues primarily during the youth outdoor activity program, and that's from roughly 7:15 to 7:45, when we're experiencing continuous noise. And by noise, I mean yelling and screaming and squealing, and it continues unabated. Now, it's true, the noise has moved from the south parking lot area and adjoining landscape to the front of the church and to the north side. And I think that just shifts the noise to another location with impact to Wiggott Lane especially. We did have an absence of noise over the past two Wednesdays. Wednesday, the last Wednesday in October, it was due to the intercession of a policeman, and the sound and noise moved indoors. And then the last Wednesday was delightful, because it rained, and they all went indoors, and the noise stopped. I, I can't understand why youth play activities have to continue when noise is a major issue, along with parking. Why not shift the noise to indoors? It was very quiet the past two Wednesdays. Kids have physical activities at school, they have after-school activities, and I don't think their motor development, as pediatrician speaking, needs a half hour of evening noise, particularly when it's a major annoyance to the neighbors. And I've discussed this with the pastor, and it's been an issue for two years. Do we, do they need a half an hour of activities in our neighborhood? I doubt it. Now, we're promised a sound wall. Sound walls are expensive, and they're not aesthetically attractive. But if it takes a sound wall to provide a solution, if the noise bounces back from the sound wall toward the church, enjoy it. Outdoor noise is the issue. Elimination of outdoor noise in the evenings is a simple solution. Go indoors, socialize as vigorously as you wish, kids, but we appreciate some quiet in the neighborhood. Thank you.
And if I could just clarify, excuse me, sir? You then would like to have an eight-foot masonry wall. Is that what I understand?
I think if, if we're going to, if we can't have some control achieved by the church elders in the supervision of the kids in that youth meeting every Wednesday night, and God knows, there may be further evenings as the church grows that will demand youth activities, then I think the only other solution is to put up some sort of barrier.
All right, thank you very much.
Could I ask just one, one question? You're right across, or Elgin is right across the street from Walnut Acres School, the playground.
Mm-hmm. It, it is perpendicular.
Yes. Are there not activities there at the school?
Yes, but during the day, you know, you accept the schoolchildren to play. I mean...
I, I'm thinking more of afternoon and evenings with, it's not Little League, but there are a number of, you know...
There's quite a bit of soccer activity.
Yeah, soccer and softball or T-ball or whatever. Are you, does that create noise for you?
I think most of this is neighbors except, you know...
You don't find it excessive, is that what you're saying?
Play area like Walnut Acres Playground is tremendous, you know, it's a real asset to the community, especially when it's not used as a parking lot, I might add.
Okay. And you're not far from the swim club, the Scottsdale Swim Club, is that correct? A couple blocks?
You can hear noise at times, especially when they have a big social event there.
Well, when they have those big swim meets, yeah, I'm, I'm an old swim team mom too.
Again, there's active athletic competition and games, and the noises that they usually make are a lot different than free-range activity that's poorly supervised.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. And if you're going to speak, would you please kind of come up over towards the wall so we can...
See how many more, right?
Not have to wait for the following speaker, please, to preserve time for the rest of you.
Yes, I'm Bill Wattenberg, Rubicon Court, speaking for my wife, Katamartori. Maybe I can clarify a little of the fence business. There is no confusion, as Sandy Meyer said, about where the fence is or the property line. From day one, it's been proposed along the south, the red line that you saw, up along the Katamartori property, it's the complete line there, there's no half or anything, and then begins the Benzett. Now, the first half of the Benzett is right next to where these garbage bins are. The second half is well landscaped. I talked to them, they don't need that changed. They just simply want the sound barrier for the same reason these people do, and everyone does, that is to shield the light, the noise, and up in that area, the garbage bins, which will be serviced by trucks banging and slamming all the time. And so I don't think there's any confusion at all, but I have to tell you, what is a little amazing, I was the one who represented these people before the design review committee that rejected this plan twice, as you know, and the third time, they did not get their wishes to stop it. But the only basic thing offered to them, and I have the recording here, which all of you should have heard, was the sound barrier, and they were very adamant. They were adamant that it should be eight feet and should go around the entire church. Three different members are here, for you to hear, and your planning staff's never told you this. They felt that there should be a fence around the entire church property for the sake of all residents, including those on the north who may someday want the same thing. Now, no one's pushed that, but for the suggestion that suddenly it's debatable... Look, the very basis of approval of your design review committee, and there's your architects and engineers that I think everybody has respect for, their very basis of their approval was on the staff report that says the church has agreed to build a, a wall or fence, and they, the staff suggests that masonry is desirable. The design review people discussed that and said, "We agree," and that was the condition of their motion. It's not in, you haven't been told this by your, your planning staff. Now, what's unfair to these people is to leave this issue open, go back to design review. Their lives have been ripped up. I know how much time they've had to spend in the, in the trauma for two and a half year. They're your homeowners here in Walnut Creek. They do not have full-time paid engineers and church staff and others to do this. Now, you ought to settle this issue right here at the city council on the basis of your own staff report. And if need be, call the design review people and ask them what they said. If you want, I'll play it for you here, okay? Take some time, because they went over about 35 minutes discussing this. Now, I'm suggesting to you, for their favor, settle this instead of another design review and then another appeal, and the church insists it's open for debate and it's unfair. Well, what's unfair is, you know, these people believe they shouldn't be doing expansion to begin with. You know that.
Okay, thank you so much for your input. Thank you, Mr. Wattenberg. Questions?
Can I ask a question? Yeah, Bill, I, I guess I really didn't understand what, with regard to the fence. We have this map in front of us that has the red line on it, and is that satisfactory?
Yes, yeah. With one condition, can I point out here, so we, we settle this issue? If they put the map up, I'll show you what they're confused about, your own planning staff, okay?
But I mean, all this testimony seems to say that you don't, people don't like that map.
No, 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 there isn't anyone that doesn't like the map. It was some question, when people hoped to stop the whole expansion, they didn't want to commit to a fence.
Okay.
When the expansion was approved, they all got together, and I listened to them, I didn't tell them what to do, and they all said, "This is what we want," and I said, "Fine, this is what we'll do." That's all. They all want an eight-foot fence, they want a masonry sound barrier. You can see some over at North Creek, you can see some in Latter Day Church and others. It's permanent, not wood to rot 15 years from now, and then argue over who has to fix it. And your own staff report says that masonry is preferable if you're going to landscape it with vines and heavy landscaping. The design review recommendation I have right here on record, that they should have told you about, says that the design review wants this heavily landscaped to return the greenery look. That was their biggest issue. Your staff, planning staff hasn't said a word to you about it, but that's where all this began.
But, but then again, I'm concerned.
Sure.
Our condition 22 right now, did, did you want to change that?
Sure, it's, it's, I think, I think Mr. Poitier Van gave you...
You want to add the idea that it must be a masonry fence and not leave any...
Well, that's what, I think he gave you, it proposed new condition 22.
Okay, but I just want to be clear on...
That is consistent with your own staff report in the beginning. Now, the staff has come up with a condition now to take sound barrier out of the condition. They don't say masonry or anything else. That's not acceptable to these people, or to me.
Okay.
That's all. But now, see the red line here? I don't have a pointer, but see the upper end of the red line, the little white dot on the inside of the church property? There's a little white section there on the inside of the church property. I believe that's the garbage bins.
Yes.
The only thing that was said in design review, and the people agreed, is just take the fence up to at least shield the darn garbage bins, see? That's about halfway across the Benzett property. The landscape part of Benzett, they don't need to bother. There's no garbage bins there. But down this way, that's where the slam bang and the cars and everything else and the lights take place. There's no business about half of the Katamartori property or anything. That's the total Katamartori boundary there. And the red line is the boundary of the property, see? So no confusion there whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Michael Manoldo. I live at 325 Menlo Court. Last hearing, I went into parking a little bit, and I'll just touch on it, not getting into all the data in more detail. But I believe that the onsite parking provided by St. Matthew's exceeds the current code requirements if this were all new construction. And one thing I'd ask you to take a look at in the conditions for off-site parking is that you give some discretion to the planning director. If the Walnut Acres agreement is not renewed, that they, the planning director, consider other alternatives that may make more sense than shuttling in. I'm not saying you have to decide that now, but give the planning director some discretion on how that's resolved. With regards to conditions 8 through 11, I strongly object to limitation on youth activities, and submit that they are unfair. There's no reason that for this neighborhood that we should be anything other than what's required under the noise ordinance throughout, throughout the city and the curfew requirements. Suddenly, because these children are going to church, they have to go home earlier than other children in the city. Doesn't seem to be an appropriate limitation. With regards to the fence, I do ask that you rely on planning staff and design review on what their comments were, and not rely on anyone in this room for what those were. My belief, my belief is that it was left open for discussion to come back to design review as to whether there's a fence or, or concrete sound wall. But I also ask you to ask for data. No one to date has provided any data that the activities at St. Matthew exceed the sound ordinance as they are today. They're already improving everything by bringing activities toward the center of the campus, and this just seems like one more condition that's not based on fact but on anecdotal information. And I just suggest that you base it on the facts. And if you need to have an acoustical engineer, do that, and not just rely on people's observations and anecdotal information. Thank you.
Question? Sure. Which, can you describe what activities the youth do outside at night?
I think I might leave that a little bit more to Pastor Jeff, but my observation, because my child's only, oldest one's nine years old, is prior to going indoors, they burn off a little bit of energy ahead of time. But I don't know why we'd limit that any more than you do at Walnut Acres directly across the street or down the street at any other school. Or actually, my concern is you're going to have a sound wall in my backyard. I have three boys and a pool. And at what point, if a neighbor complains, do I have to build an eight-foot sound wall around my property for just a, some children playing outside?
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is John Burns. I live at 250 Bliss Court in Walnut Creek. I didn't plan on speaking this evening, but when I was brought into the fray of existing wall here, I'm a neighbor of the church. I have about 100 feet of fence that is directly adjacent to the north parking lot. And I've really enjoyed the church there for the 23 years, 23 years that I've been there. I really fret at the fact that I heard that there's some suggestion that this fence should go all the way around the church property. I certainly would not want an eight-foot wall, let alone a stone wall, in my backyard. I have a wood fence that's six feet tall, and I enjoy the church as a neighbor very, very much. There are times when there are some noise, but quite honestly, my neighbors' kids, my neighbors' parties certainly make much more noise than the church has in the last 23 years. So I think while there's certainly some neighbors that object to a lot of things that have happened at the church and some of the activities there, I think they're being really blown out of proportion. And as a, as a neighbor there for many, many years, I would hate to see that a large wall be built, and I'd feel like I'd be in a prison rather than a playground for some children making a very, very little noise in my estimation. I've always had positive comments. I've always said that my property is one of the luckier ones, because while there might be some noise of cars parking or children playing in a parking lot, this typically occurs on a couple days a week, certainly Sunday morning is one of them. Sometimes there's evening activities, but they don't stretch well into the evening. I really haven't heard any noise past perhaps 8 o'clock in the evening. So I would like to go on record to say I do not want an eight-foot wall built over on my property where I have about 100 feet adjacent to the church. Thank you.
Could you restate your address, please?
250 Bliss Court.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, next speaker.
Hello, my name is Pam Teeman, and I also am not planning to talk. But I would like to thank you for this special meeting tonight to discuss this issue, because it's very dear to my heart and to a lot of people, obviously, in, in the city. I am a resident of Walnut Creek and a taxpayer, and have been also a member of St. Matthew for only about a year and a half. I tremble to say that I am one of the adult helpers on Wednesday evenings. So I perhaps can give some more information. We have a middle school group that meets starting at 7 o'clock, and we do gather outside. I'm from New York, so whenever it's nice weather, I think it's great to be outside, getting the fresh air. I do certainly realize we need to be respectful of our neighbors and of noise that we make. But we do gather at 7 o'clock, and then we do... But we do gather at seven o'clock, and then we do start with an outdoor activity, kind of to, they haven't seen each other maybe for a few days or maybe since last Wednesday. Some of the students come from different schools across town. And so, we play games, and their favorite games are some kind of tag. So, we're outside in that area, and then at 7:30 we come in, we do some activities inside, and then we end up with a half an hour of Bible study. So, at 8:30, our activity time is done, and then the parents come. So, then there is the noise of cars arriving to pick up because none of these students drive. So, everyone needs to get picked up and then they're home. They're usually, I mean, it doesn't take that much time for the pickup time. It is true, on rainy days, we're inside the whole time. And so, basically, Wednesday evenings, it's from seven to eight-thirty, maybe eight-forty-five. One of the things that really is wonderful about this new plan is that the buildings form this horseshoe shape with the courtyard in the middle. And so, instead of the grass being next to the parking lot, closer to our neighbors, we now have this whole play area enclosed with buildings which are going to provide a sound barrier. Then we will have the fence across the parking lot area, and I think altogether, this will greatly reduce the noise. We have also talked with the students about how we do need to be quieter. They are very giggly, and you know, they're, we're working on it. We are definitely working on getting the games quieted down. And I guess that's all I have to say. I have also been at these meetings, and I don't remember us ever, ever being decided it had to be exactly eight feet. And I remember saying up to eight feet, but perhaps my memory is not completely accurate.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Yes, Mr. Scrub.
Ms. Teeman, is it possible that the blow-off period, the games from seven to 7:30, could perhaps be moved across the street to a playground area?
That would certainly be possible.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, and thank you for your courtesy of meeting with us this evening. My name is John Adams. I live at 312 Wiggett Lane. Been there for thirty-six years. We were there before the church came. We are concerned about the number of meetings we've had to attend. Seems like we've been dragging this on and being dragged out to meetings forever. I've written letters to Ms. Beroni, Smires, other members of the planning commission, the design commission, and I was here at the last city council meeting. I appreciate your courtesy and your time. The, the whole fact remains that the church is overbuilt for the property, and they now plan on more expansion. All of my letters have talked about this very thing. They do not have sufficient parking for their congregation. Now, they're circumventing this, as I mentioned before, by utilizing some of the school property. And that's a kind of a two-edged sword because it helps in a lot of ways, and it's kind of a blind trap on the other side. But, but we know their position. We think they have really fine leadership. I don't know why they need four thousand square feet for administrative. I don't think they should be complaining about having to walk twenty yards to talk to some of the other people on their staff. Why would they need all that for administrative? Why do they need all this stuff, extra building, and still not have enough parking space? They still do not have enough parking space, and they promised us, you know, I go clear back to ninety and ninety-one with the major monster on the north. They do not have enough parking space. They're making more noise than we'd like to have. And I'd have to admit, I don't mind the noise from Walnut Acres. It's a different kind of noise, and I don't know why. But they're really objectionable, the way they've treated the neighborhood. I have a thought, and I offer this respectfully to all of you. I would doubt that any of you here would put up with this if it was right across the street from you or right adjacent to your home. It's just too much. They are no longer a neighborhood church. They are a broad variety, I think forty-seven percent, the last figure I saw from, from the pastor here, forty-seven percent of their members come from outside Walnut Creek, as far as Brentwood, Concord, you know, the Outlying Territory. Forty-seven percent of it, it may be a little higher now, I haven't checked with pastor in a while. But they're now a major regional church. They do not belong and have a right to expand in a neighborhood-
Could you wrap up, please?
You bet. One more sentence.
Thank you.
I think ninety-five percent of the people right over here would not put up with it if it was across the street from them or in their backyard. I thank you for your courtesy and your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? And are there people in the audience that have adjoining property that would be involved with the fence but have chosen not to come to the microphone? If so, could you raise your hand? Okay. And could you raise your hand if you agree with the eight-foot sound wall? Or if you might have a, all right, if you agree with the eight-foot sound wall and you live next to that fence, would you raise your hand? Okay. Are there any that live next to what would be proposed as a wall but do not wish to have the eight-foot height or the, the-
Masonry.
What do you call it?
Masonry.
The masonry material. Is anyone not wish this? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure if, I heard it said that everyone was represented here this evening that has property adjoining the proposed fence. Is that correct? Can someone nod their head if that is accurate? Okay.
I think Benzett is not here.
One person may not be here.
One missing. Our neighbor had surgery on her foot.
Okay, one person is missing.
Two.
Apparently, two people.
Yes.
All right, we've heard of two people that are missing. Okay, thank you very much. All right, and no other speakers? Then we would give the church now ten minutes, or excuse me, three minutes to wrap up.
I'd like to tell you a story about my daughter's preparation for school this morning. On Saturday, she got about a foot of her hair cut off for donating to Locks of Love, something she has been hoping for and wishing for, for quite a long time, as you can imagine.
Who was your daughter?
Eleven years old.
Thank you.
One of the middle school kids.
Okay.
And she, she went to church on Sunday, and a lot of people asked her about that, and she explained what was going on. And a lot of people complimented her on how cute she looked, but also on making that choice to give up her hair. And this morning, she had an interesting comment. As we were getting ready for breakfast, she said, "You know, I think when I go to school today, all of the compliments that I got at church are going to be evened out by insults that people will have for me today at school." Evening things out, in many ways, is what we're about at St. Matthew. We all know it can be difficult for middle schoolers, for high schoolers, for others, the challenges. And where do they go to even things out? Some kids turn to drugs, some kids turn to alcohol, some kids turn to other ways to try to even things out. What we're trying to do here is provide a place to even out some of these things in life, to even them out in ways that are good for them, taking into account the building, the design, and so on. That's good for the community, good for our neighbors, and good for Walnut Creek. And so, we ask that you will help us move forward and see that this positive kind of evening out really comes true. Thank you.
Thank you. And did anyone else care to, I guess we've used up our time. Okay, thank you. And now we have three minutes from the Poytiven to wrap up.
Thank you once again. That's a very stirring remark to even up the, the score. But if I remember, Pastor Teeman refused to accept the conditions. He couldn't quite come, come to it to accept the conditions which were presented here as a compromise. So, how even up are we here? How, how far is the church going to make its peace with the neighbors? This church is in, is now been approved for a second major expansion. It's, it's too big, and there's not anything we can do about it. Where, the neighbors are stuck. You know, you've already approved this. So, the conditions that have been proposed, for the most part, are acceptable to the neighbors, and we will say so. The only question really is the sound wall. And the church is waffling on the sound wall. It was very clear from the first design review commission meeting that a sound wall was going to be needed, and the type and size was going to be up to the affected neighbors. Now, there's a lot of revisionist history seems to be going on to try to back that out, but that is the actual case. And as was stated earlier, we've got voice recordings that could back that up. But this is the last time we'll get together to talk about this, I think. It's, it's been a very difficult process. I appreciate the fact that we finally got a chance to express some points of view, and the city council has listened to it. I hope you will make a decision to incorporate the revised wording into Condition 22, and let's put this behind us and go forward on a positive basis. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will now close all the public comments, and we will bring it back to the city council. Does the city council have questions to start with? Or perhaps we should start by answering the public's questions. First of all, I would like to ask, there were a number of questions from Mrs. Poytiven having to do with enforcement and safeguards. Can we have a response in terms of how will the various conditions be enforced and who is it that the public contacts with concerns? Who is the point person? I think there was another idea, could there be a neighbor that would be assigned or a staff person assigned to this issue? Could we have some responses to those questions, please? I think the enforcement issue is here, and do the conditions adequately respond to that?
I may be wrong, but I think Mrs. Poytiven was concerned mostly about how to address the noise-related concerns in terms of when the youth activities are supposed to be ceasing and outdoor activities are not supposed to occur. And in terms of enforcement of that, the, if the church is violating those conditions of approval, we have code enforcement officers who go out and can check those to see if they are. If they're occurring at night, then it is up to the police department to determine if those conditions of approval are being violated in terms of activities reported back to us. And if they're not adhering to the conditions of approval, then the, the conditional use permit can be revoked, and it also can go to citations, and there's a number of measures. A specific staff person assigned to that would probably not be a good idea just because of, you know, you don't know if the staff person's going to continue to be here forever. So, but again, how conditions of approval are enforced on conditional use permits is by reporting of adjacent neighbors that they are not, they are being violated, and then follow-up and research to determine if they have been, and then subsequent measures to enforce them.
So, could we have a number that people could call? Is there a specific person, not maybe by name, but by title, that would be asked for should there be violations?
Well, code enforcement officer there, here Monday through Friday, and they can be accessed by phone. And in the evening, it's, I believe they call-
Police?
The police department, just dispatch? Yes.
We have the police chief here who's nodding his head, yes.
Yes.
But we won't give you, them, your home number. Okay. The conditional use permit, in terms of the parking requirements, and I think that was also mentioned, in terms of there will be a review of the parking each, well, at certain periods.
Right. The condition of approval calls for a survey to be conducted six months after completion of the construction. And that survey would be conducted by a traffic engineer and a template, and the survey requirements would be set up with that first survey. And then subsequent surveys would be conducted every thirty-six months following that same template. And when that template, or when that survey shows that, if it shows ninety-five percent usage of the parking lot, then these, the parking contingency plan and the conditions and that would kick in.
And if the neighbors are having consistent problems with parking overflow, how would they report that, and how would that be?
They would report that, again, to the planning department or the code enforcement officers, and the condition of approvals does indicate that the community development director can call for an earlier survey outside of those timeframes.
So, ultimately, the community development director would be the ultimate responsible party in that, in that instance, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, that would be who would ultimately enforce that?
Well, would call for the survey to be conducted, and then if, if that, yes, if that, it shows the ninety-five percent capacity, then yes, that's who would enforce it.
So, that's who they could contact should there be that kind of ongoing issue with the parking?
Yes.
In terms of the design review commission meeting and the staff recommendation on the masonry wall and the design review commission support of that some time ago, can you comment on that?
Well, I think there's some confusion on that the design review commission has not granted design review approval of this project yet. The typical order is that when it's coming for a conditional use permit is the design review commission will review the site plan and the architecture, circulation, and make a recommendation to the planning commission with regards to those items for them to then make their decision on the conditional use permit, and then it goes back to design review for the final design review approval. I was not at the design review commission meeting where this was recommended to the planning commission for approval. There was discussion about a fence and a sound attenuating fence or wall. But in terms of the materials and the height, it was, what came out of the design review commission is that it be a consistent design throughout the, the project area and that the materials be consistent, that it not be, you know, individually approved by the individual property owners and that you got it into, you know, a different type of fence along each property boundary. Now, the, the sound attenuation is something that we can add to that condition of approval that says a sound attenuating fence or wall. Because I do believe that was the recommendation from staff, and the design review commission did have that as a recommendation for sound attenuation, some sort of sound attenuation fence or wall.
All right. And the recommendation from staff at that time, you were not familiar with that report, they recommended this particular type of fence, a masonry fence?
Right. That, that is, that was a staff report that was prepared by Alan, and I assumed at the time that it was something that was being proposed by the architect for the, the project proposal, that it be a masonry wall.
Is there any other staff that was present at that meeting that would know-
No.
-what the details of that were? Miss, you weren't there, okay.
But let's clarify that this had to, this has to go back to design review in any case?
Correct.
It was not approved by design review?
It was not approved. It was-
It was looked at.
It was looked at, and for, again, the process is for the design review commission to look at the architecture and the site layout and the circulation in terms of the land use issues that the planning commission would be addressing and make a recommendation- in terms of the land use issues that the planning commission would be addressing and make a recommendation to them. So in terms of all of those issues, they did make a recommendation to the planning commission, but they have not made final design review approval. And there was a number of things that they wanted the design review, you know, to come back to the design review commission to be addressed.
And I just want to clarify, this is the way it is normally done, is that correct? This is not an extra thing that's been thrown in just because we want to put another stumbling block out? That's a requirement for all projects?
No. Yeah, this is exactly the process that is handled. It's always handled this way if there's a use permit going before the planning commission.
Thank you. I just wanted that to be very clear to everybody.
Getting back to comments from, questions from the audience. It was suggested by one commentator that the onsite parking exceeds the required parking. Can you specify what, why we are asking for additional parking and mitigations for parking?
Right. The zoning ordinance requirement, again, is based on international transportation engineers' standards. And the, but the observed usage of that parking lot indicated that the parking demand for peak services or, you know, holiday services did exceed the actual parking availability onsite. And so, a parking analysis was done that indicated that there needs to be additional off-site parking locations for those peak demand periods. And that's why we are requiring additional parking beyond what is in the ordinance.
Okay. So, that is the reason, it was because of the observed use
Right.
exceeds what at times is available?
That's correct.
And causes a negative impact in the neighborhood?
That's correct.
Okay. We had that condition 12
Yes.
Regarding the consistency with the land use plan and the conditions.
Right. And the conditions of approval that you adopt this evening are supersede if there's an inconsistency with the land use plan. It probably would be advisable to add wording that, such as "The owner shall maintain consistency with the St. Matthew's land use plan dated such and such as revised to be consistent with the, all conditions of the conditional use permit regarding parking management, et cetera."
Do you have that written down somewhere?
I do.
All right. Well, I think we would need to have that language. I tried to write it down, but I couldn't write that fast. So, we would add then some language to tighten that up, to make it very clear that the
Conditions of the use permits are the ones that prevail.
That prevail, okay. Thank you. And getting back to the sound wall. Would it be, could we put in language that would give direction to the design review commission? That would tighten up that what we are asking them to do? Not just to look at the wall in terms of the design issues and attractiveness and landscaping around and so forth and so on. But also to require that it be a sound attenuating wall that meets the, in this case, I would say, the agreement of all of the adjoining property owners that would be affected by the fence in terms of the wall, excuse me, the walls in terms of height and material? Could that be agreed? I mean, could we add that? Could we add that to the condition? So that it's very clear that we're giving direction to the design review commission to include that? Yes? Do that?
Yes. I can give you some wording if you'd like on that condition. "The owner shall construct at the initial phase of the approved project up to an eight-foot tall," or we could take out "up to" and just say an eight-foot tall, unless, because we don't have agreement from, well, two of the property owners are not here. So, if you want to say "up to," or you could say "an eight-foot wall."
We could say an eight-foot An eight-foot wall unless shorter is desired by
Up to.
Up to.
Oh, up to. So let's say the owner shall construct
No higher than.
"The owner shall construct at the initial phase of the approved project up to an eight-foot tall, sound attenuating, solid fence or wall along the property lines." And then the rest of the language would say the same. And then after the period, it would say "the height, material, and design shall be reviewed and approved by the design review commission, consistent with the sound attenuation and materials as agreed to by the church and"
The neighbors.
The neighbors.
I didn't hear the word masonry anywhere in that.
Correct. And if you wish to add the word masonry, that's fine.
Okay. But you did not and you were, I mean, sound attenuating suggests that that's the likely outcome. But you would leave that to the, to the design review commission?
There are sound attenuating fences that are wood. So, you know, but that's up to
More often.
Agreement of the neighbors and the church.
How about the Benziv, Benziv property?
Terms of the extent of the fence, yes. The fence is intended to extend to the
Garbage.
Beyond the garbage.
But it was also common that they already have, because they had been very concerned 15 years ago when the church expanded. And I presume quite a bit of landscaping went in to give them privacy from the expansion.
Well, I think that the extensive landscaping that is on the north side of their property boundary is on their property. There is, there was a 30-foot landscape setback that was on the church side, but there is quite a bit of extensive landscaping on their property also.
On their side as well. So, which they don't care to tear out. It probably gives them as much sound attenuation as a wall, okay?
Can I help you on that?
No.
I'm sorry, but we've closed the public comment.
You can
What I would like, however, is to include the wall to go beyond, to go to
To screen the
The garbage, the trash area. And if it goes into the Benziv's property area, that it would have their agreement?
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wattenberg's saying yes too. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. So somehow we need to add that little piece in there. All right. Were there other questions that I did not cover in our comment that we heard?
Well, the pastor asked, and this came up again, about the curfew. If they're going to put in a sound attenuating wall, do we really have to restrict the curfew time? Right now, their middle school apparently is over, program is over at 8:30. And we're talking about having a 9:30 curfew for everything.
That's correct.
And, right, the high schools go on to what time, 10 o'clock?
They
9:30?
9:30.
So if we left it at 9:30, it effectively is including both groups, is that correct?
Yes.
We did have a question too about amplified sound.
Yes.
And I think the amplified sound would be limited to the courtyard, is that correct?
Well, the courtyard and the entry plaza, they do conduct services, some services outside. And when they do that, they do point the speakers towards the church. But that would be a limitation on their religious activity. So, they ask for us not to exclude that area.
And there would not be any amplified sound in the parking lot, then?
That's correct.
And it also says reasonable sound level. I assume that they would agree with that. They don't want to be blasting everybody out, I would think.
I think on condition 14, pastor requested 2:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. when school is in session.
School days, yes.
All right. Make note of that. And there was another request.
I think there was one in the item above that with regard to the shuttle service
A shuttle service if needed.
If required.
And that would be addressed to the parking mitigation plan?
Yes.
Are there other questions from council members?
No, I can move the table.
I think you can see from our notebooks that we've read and made all kinds of notes and marks. Also, we did receive the additional letters that came in late this afternoon from several of the neighbors, including the appallant. Any other questions?
Not any other questions, if I'd be able to make a comment or whatever.
Sure.
And I would just have to say that I want to congratulate everybody. I appreciate the spirit of cooperation that came into this. I know everybody is not 100% happy. But that's part of the compromise in working together. And as the pastor said, kind of I was taken by your comments on evening things out. I hope that it does. And I appreciate the fact that you have been willing to look at these conditions and that the neighbors have sort of settled down on just the wall is the primary thing with some of these other conditions. And so I want to thank everybody for working as hard as you did during this, the last month.
I kind of feel like a mediator instead of a policymaker to a certain extent. And just what you said, Sue, both sides don't appear to be entirely happy, but typically that's a sign of a successful process. It really is. There was some objection to condition 22, and I think we can take care of that. And I think Mr. Abrams said he was ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt the revised resolution, approve conditional use permit Y 03-033 as we amended. Ms. Myers?
We amended 13 and 14 and 22.
Correct.
And something else?
12. Right.
Second.
Fine.
13, 14. And
12.
And 12. Oh, yes. All right. And did we, are we sure we have the clarification of those amendments? The language, I think that we all intended that we make it very clear that our direction to the design review commission has to do with the eight-foot tall masonry sound attenuating, up to eight-foot tall masonry sound attenuating wall. And that the input of the neighbors would be considered during that decision. All right. And we, I think we are very clear on all the other amendments, are we not?
I think you said the neighbors and the church had to agree on the wall. Make sure that church is included, is having a say.
Yes.
I take it that 22 was amended per the language that Sandy Meyer gave us?
Would you want to read that again, your amendment on item 22? And I know I called you about three times this afternoon, sort of bringing up these very, very same things, so.
"The owner shall construct as the initial, as the initial phase of the approved project up to an eight-foot tall masonry sound attenuating wall along the property lines at the development areas shown on exhibit B. The height, material, and design shall be reviewed and approved by the design review commission based on input and agreement between the neighbors and church representatives." Now, this is the part that I'm adding right now and I didn't quite finish. But "The extent of the fence on the Benziv property shall enclose the trash enclosures, or shall screen the trash enclosures, and the, shall be approved as to the extent by the Benzivs."
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. So I have a motion and a second. And before we vote, does anyone else care to say? Any comment? I too would like to thank both the neighborhood and the church for putting a great deal of thought and concern into coming together and working out solutions that would work for both of you. And so that you can get along and live together as good neighbors. And I think that's what this whole discussion has been about, is how can the church be good neighbors in the neighborhood? And I sense a renewed intention of the church to be a good neighbor and to try to work together to make this happen. And all of this has taken a great deal of time and effort by many, many people here this evening over quite a long period of time. Yet somehow, when we sit down together and talk out our differences, we can come up with some solutions. Obviously, this isn't 100% of what either anyone wanted, but it is coming together with some solutions that can work to make this work for everybody. So we appreciate your input. We appreciate all your time and effort. And yes, we have one more person that would like to say something.
I'm sorry, Mayor Hicks. Going back to your language, if, well, you said it was subject to the input and agreement. Now, how, what if either one of the parties doesn't agree to the sound wall? Why does that have to be in the condition? Shouldn't it be, the design review commission has the authority, if I'm not mistaken, and the input from the neighbors and the input from the church, but not necessarily the agreement?
That makes sense. I agree.
That is true.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. And thank you very much for catching that. And lastly, I would really like to thank our staff because they have done a yeoman job of trying to work with folks on this. And although Alan Carrion couldn't be here today, he was ill, he spent weekend after weekend after weekend sitting out there, kind of like undercover in his car, counting traffic and how many cars were reparked and so on. And I know there's been a great deal of work by our planning staff and I want to thank all of them. Sandy Meyer, thank you so much for all you've done. I know you've worked very hard. So with that, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Skow? Oh, sorry. I was going to ask.
Want me to vote now or later?
If I could, we could vote now.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainey?
Yes.
Councilmember Regalia?
Aye.
Councilmember Abrams?
Aye.
Mayor Hicks?
Aye.
And thank you very much. We have just a few announcements to make before we adjourn the meeting. And first of all, I want to announce the Veterans Day service, which is this coming Saturday at 11 o'clock at Civic Park. And it will be rain or shine. If it rains, it will be inside the community center. So that's Saturday, the 11th at 11:00 p.m.
A.M.
A.M., excuse me, A.M.
Thank you.
Second is the opening of the Hot Rod Show at the gallery, at the Dean Lesher Regional Center for the Art, the Bedford Gallery, which is Sunday.
I think you go outside to talk.
If you could chat outside, that would be helpful. Thank you. We're still continuing our meeting. The Hot Rod Show at the Bedford Gallery is opening Sunday, November 17th. And it promised us to be a great and very exciting show. But even more exciting, perhaps to some, is Friday, November 17th at 3:30, we will have the opening of the second annual Walnut Creek on Ice, right in Civic Park. And it'll be a lot of fun. I'm going to try not to fall down again this year. Then this, on this coming Sunday, we have the Wellness Challenge, wonderful event in Heather Farm Park, starting at 7:00 a.m. with a, let's see, let's see the scheduling here. There was a wonderful thing in the newspaper announcing this. Okay, 7:00 a.m. interfaith service, followed by 7:30, a healthy, free continental breakfast. And then at 8:30, a pep rally and warm-up. We need that to get in shape for the ice rink. And then at 9, a 3 to 5 K walk and run. And this is all in Heather Farm Park. And from 7 to 11, there will be a wellness fair. And it's free. How about that? Even the breakfast.
Is that for Sunday?
It's a fall celebration, Wellness City Challenge. And this has involved all of our schools, every school in Walnut Creek, as well as seniors in Rossmore. And all of us are getting out and trying to move, get healthier and eat healthier. So look forward to that.
I just wanted to clarify, it's Sunday?
Sunday, yes. Next Sunday, starting at 7:00 a.m. Then, lastly, before we adjourn the meeting, don't forget to vote tomorrow. The greatest privilege a citizen can have. And finally, I would like to adjourn this meeting with, in the memory of a fine Walnut Creek resident, a friend, who passed away just this past week. And Charlie, could you please comment on Pat Rogers' passing?
We would adjourn the meeting in memory of Patricia Rogers. Pat Rogers was a longtime resident of Walnut Creek, probably over 30 or 40 years. She passed away after a very difficult battle with cancer in the last week or so. Throughout her time here, she was so, she was like the professional volunteer. She was involved in everything from schools to the arts and other activities. And she will be sorely missed. The end came very quickly. I just recall about a week ago, when it was made known that the end was inevitable, she did let me know that she had voted by absentee ballot. And I will forever remember that sentiment, because she was, right up to the end, very interested and always involved in our local politics. So in honor of Pat Rogers, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much, Charlie. And I also was fortunate to know Pat. And I will always remember her because she was quietly behind the scenes, very, very interested in her community. And she paid attention to what was going on, watched city council meetings. And every once in a while, she would write a letter to the editor, because she really did want to participate. So I, too, will miss Pat. And next city council meeting on November 21st, we will also be adjourning our meeting in memory of two very, very important people that passed away recently. One will be Phyllis Rock and the other, Michael Desa. And we'll hear more about that on the 21st. So this evening, we adjourn this meeting in memory of Patricia Rogers.